Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Company One Firehouse for the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Newington Board of Fire Commissioners. It is now seven P M. And we're live. A roll call has been taken. I would like everyone to stand please for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united states, all.
Can we all please remain standing? And take a moment of silence for our fallen brothers and sisters in the service, and especially our Newington resident and friend Hartford police officer that just recently tragically passed. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay. All right, getting into the agenda. Attendance is offset approval of prior meeting minutes of August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three Commissioners Meeting. We have a motion.
Like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as read from the August seventeenth meeting.
I assume you mean as presented.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to public participation for the first time. Anyone from the public that would like to comment? Please do so. Speak loudly so that we can hear you on the Powell. First time public participation. Chief.
I'd like to welcome Town Manager Tom Hocke, the Board of Fire Commissioners. We appreciate you coming. And thank you very much. It's good to be here.
Yes, thank you, Chief. And thank you, Town Manager Hocke, and we're pleased to have you with us.
Thank you for the invite.
Thank you. Chief Trauma, your hand was up second. Oh, okay.
The Board of Fire Commission. You're gonna find out it's one of their fire departments in the state. The way they run. I'm so proud to be part of it. For forty years and still go. They still welcome me in.
Wow, when you do bring the donuts.
Yeah.
We've been trying to turn the key on this.
Yeah. Chief Regina, did you have your hand up or you were good?
No, sir.
Anybody else? But welcome, Councilor Manke.
Hi.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna close public participation and move on to communications and monthly reports.
I have several monthly reports. The first one is from Chief Trauma for the August. For the month of August. I've read through everything. As always, it is precise and well presented. Chief's activities as well for August, two thousand and twenty-three. Nothing that needs to be worked on, so that's good. Trainings, Division sent their report as well. And Chief Regina, looking through your training report as always, it is very well put together, and I am just absolutely impressed with the amount of members of this department that attend either regular drills or department drills and one of the, one of the items that I picked up on and I should pay more attention to is the amount of hours that are ladies and gentlemen of this department put in either on a weekly or monthly basis. So my hat's off to you for running the training division perfectly.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I always I'm glad you come in and let that Commissioner, because it's always seems to be between three hundred and fifty and five hundred hours a month, a month.
Next report.
Just a comment here. This is the first time I use the Red M M X, the data at the last, on the end of that document.
Okay.
So I'm generating the report from directly from there now, and then bring it into that report. And what you're seeing is taken to the times of each. So we have every company, Chief requests that every company put in their training the time in the training division. And we're placing that information into the Red M M X. And so you're gonna start seeing breakdowns. I can give you breakdowns of exactly who's there.
Yeah, I like this. This is nice.
So you'll see everything.
That's awesome.
And just another comment, that should help our I S O rating.
That's exactly where we're going. That's why you're seeing all that driver drain.
Yep, actually, I can see a couple of things that I Yes, I did. I saw mine. I'm here also. But hey, this is awesome. Awesome.
And that was thanks to Sarah J P, who we met with after our original I S O rating came. She's the one who kind of told us how to get the most out of our reporting, so that we get the most points in the categories listed. So Chief Regina has massaged how we document. It's we're doing the same thing, just documenting it properly.
Properly. Well, it's, it's an outstanding achievement, that's for sure. I also have
Just let me make one more comment, just so you know, Manager Hocke. The I S O is an insurance service organization. I'm sure you're familiar with it, and we are at a class three right now, which is excellent for a volunteer fire department. We are going for a class two. And if we get it, we'll be the only volunteer fire department in the state of Connecticut that has a two. And we're only like two.
Or two point, or two point, one point, two point one away from an eighty, which is gets us to a class five.
When we cross and get serious about economic development, I know how that's huge for private investors.
It is. It is very big. And it's also money savings for every homeowner in the town, which their insurance is based off for their, you know, homeowners insurance, so. Kudos to the command staff for doing this. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. That's fine. My last, my last report is from D J Zorn, Fire Marshal's Office, the month report for August the twenty-third.
No, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'm sorry. And I
This one, that's
That's it. That's the only report.
Okay. All right, do it. We don't need a motion on month reports. Do we, Commissioner? No. Okay, promotions. Would you like to take that, Commissioner?
This one?
There's a couple of them. Yes, sir. There should be two. This one and that one.
I didn't get to.
Okay, well, here you go. Fair mind for you.
Yeah, in Communications, we also have two promotion memos. One effective immediately, Nick Gianzanti has been appointed Second Lieutenant at Company Two. And Cassidy McNamara has been officially named the Training Coordinator for the Fire Department. What the Training Coordinator does is works with the training staff to make sure things, you know, it's like an help, help administrate the training.
Just so I could comment on that one.
Sure.
Cassidy and Nick are both great individuals, but Cassidy has done a tremendous job in the Training Division. She had really helped in making streamline all of the reporting to make sure everything gets in on the filing matter. And Nick Giancini used to be, was done, obviously, at Company Four. He recently moved to Company Two's. And with the vacancy, it made sense to move him into that. So those are two great promotions and look forward to working on both of them.
Right.
Thank you. Great. Okay, excellent.
What's your status?
Let's show you.
I reviewed it briefly, and it looks like it's all in good order. Would you agree with that, Chief?
I do. The only thing, I'm surprised you guys didn't catch it, the part-time part.
I did.
It's a little low, but that's because we're still seeking reimbursement from the developer. And Sherri reached out to Finance Department today. They think they have them. They just haven't had a deposit due to vacations. But once that gets, it'll be deposited into our account, and then that should go back.
Yeah, I noticed in, in in September, we already spent fifty-two percent.
Yeah, that's, that's just because we're paying it out of that, but we're getting reimbursed from the developer, but Fire Watch.
Oh, yeah.
And how is that Fire Watch going? What's?
It's going fantastic and
We're staffing it every day?
Every single day it's staffed. Just talked to D J. We're actually gonna probably be moving it forward into the month of October. And they still having a difficult time getting water up there. And until they have three working hydrants, they will not. They can't open it up.
Okay.
So there's two buildings that are almost completed. And then they're gonna be working on the third building for construction wise. And the commercial side, it's pretty much they're waiting on electrical stuff. I guess there's some delays in the, you know, construction part.
Your box and wiring, now stuff that you'd expect.
Supply and demand.
Yeah, exactly.
But huge development.
Excellent. All right, great. Uh, move, moving, uh, do we need a motion on legislature status?
Yeah, I'll move. We approve it.
And I'll second.
Well, in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, old business. Radio system update. Am I asking you or the one in the back?
The guy over there at table.
Okay.
Cause he's the best to know right now. But he's gonna learn something. Well, so the radio, the radio system is moving in a positive direction.
Sounds like an old dog to me.
It, it, it's moving in a slow motion, but we're moving in the right direction. Uh, we actually had a meeting with the state yesterday along with Fred Calhanian about the Calhanian site. The state is very interested in putting a site in Newington now. Uh, so we're gonna work with them, the Town Manager and such, to try to get that taken care of. Um, I have another meeting with them in a couple of weeks. But everything seems to be moving in a positive direction now. Um, we're still on target. I wouldn't say until probably January first or later to try to get this system up and running. So hopefully we can pull it in a little bit. We'll see what happens.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, too, and, and I, I just wanted to tell you, since I started, I've been getting more and more involved in the Chiefs watching, taking care of business, and I've been trying to watch, take care of businesses. It hasn't been enough. We, I'm working to, to make sure the system's properly implemented. Not satisfied with progress in the past. So I'm trying to choose my words carefully. The extent that it is moving forward is largely because Chief Trauma and Scott Sherrill, IT Office, have been there and taking care of business. And neither have the time to devote full time, so I'm working really hard to make sure that it is kept on track and properly implemented.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving forward.
We know that in the past, it's been going at a snail's pace. So whatever you can do is well appreciated. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Anything else on it? Okay, Jim, you know, good, chief?
No, just a little history to the Town Manager apart. What we're working on right now is all antique stuff. We've had a couple of crashes up there. And they take a transmitter out, bring it back to shop, rebuild it, because there's none to be had. Rebuild it or put it back up there. It, it's, it's an ongoing cycle, and Nico and I have been working together. Nico's a, has got, got blessed to get, I'll tell you. He is, he knows when the system's starting to act up. And he's like going up there fixing. And it's been going on for years and years, and we kept telling them, this is not gonna last. It's not gonna last, and I hate to see this thing crash. Because this town will be dead. So anything you can do to help us, we'll leave.
Well, it seems like we're on the, we're, we're on the right path, and we're moving, we're moving along. So that's, that's good progress. Thank you.
I only have, I only have one question for the Chief. And that has to do with equipment is, are we behind schedule with having equipment come in, or is it starting to come in?
So actually, some of the equipment this past week, some of the inventory is starting to come in. Mostly mobile radios have come in. They're at Norcom. The difficult part right now is we're behind schedule on portables. It was scheduled to be in at the end of August. It's now scheduled to be coming in in October. So yes, dribs and drabs are coming in. The council site is here. Actually, Nico was down in Norcom today doing a customer appreciation thing for something else. And actually saw our council set up and act the operational. So that's great to hear, because that's crucial to to change out the dispatch center and get that council site up. Once, I think next Tuesday, we're gonna be meeting with Stefan, who's from Oral Solutions. Who will be setting up a training session for the dispatchers to get down there, try out the new council, set it all up and all that good stuff. So we're definitely moving in the right direction.
All right, very good. Thank you.
So there are some delays, but I don't think it's major delays in terms of rolling stuff out.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Great.
God, Chief Flop the Air Grant Updates.
Uh, the first grant for the sign, I actually dropped off the building permit today to the Town Hall. Uh, they have the zoning approval there ready. I've gotten the chief an estimate for the electrical work. We'll have them pull their own permit. Uh, the chief has a couple of brick styles uh, to take a look at, if what closely matches that the basin you know, found of what we could make look very, very close to what we have. Uh, so that's moving as far as we should start construction soon.
Great. Well, you think that'll be before winter?
I would imagine they're gonna want to get it in before winter.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
You're hoping.
I'm hoping to have it done.
Have it done before.
So as soon as they, I hear back from Joel at Fast Signs. We can commit with the electrician, and then they can work together so the electrical conduit can be brought to where they need it, and then they can do all the tie-ins later. I had met him out here uh, Newington Electric, and he took a look downstairs. Looks like he's gonna come straight in from the sign right through the flower bed, because that was the least amount of disturbance, plus it's stone on top.
Right.
And because we're gonna put two conduits in, one for data and one for electrical, they can't be in the same conduit, right? Uh, so that's that on that project. We have heard nothing from the A F G grant that's out there.
Okay.
I don't even know when to tell you. I heard that it got pushed out a little bit as far as when the awards are gonna go. But Sonia was gonna look into that. I actually met with her last night on the Heroes grant. That's, uh, that you had sent, but we had found also.
Yep.
I had emailed her. We met last night on that. It's kind of limited to what that grant is eligible for, and it's a fifty percent match from the department. So I spoke with Chief Trauma this morning. Uh, it was, it's my thoughts that we should go with uh, boots and helmets to complement our gear. We already have a line item for those items. So if we can cut it by fifty percent, plus it's looking, you know, the way I thought it was safety gear for firefighters and with all these new regulations coming out, which is gonna blow this up. I felt if we could save fifty percent of our budget for boots, so I'm currently waiting for a quote uh, twenty pairs of boots and twenty helmets. So I can get it to Sonia, and we'll put that grant together.
Oh, great.
Awesome. And then we're looking at the A F G grant, which will be opening up soon, so that we can submit for that. And I was, again, I was talking with the chief this morning. And I think we're going to just put in for a second set of gear for every firefighter. So that we can meet the new mandates with clean, and this way we can add a washer and a dryer system that we can put a company through. But so that's probably gonna be six hundred and fifty thousand to outfit the whole department with a second set of gear.
Nice. Okay, perfect.
Excellent.
Just if you guys are aware, TubeLob here has been working very hard on grants. Any grants that come available, of course, we're trying to work with our grant writer, Sonia. She's fantastic. Um, and she gets right on these grants immediately. Um, we're still working on a grant for Sam's book, and I believe it was Walmart for the boom. It just kind of has stalled right now.
I haven't heard anything.
We haven't heard anything, but it's, it's still out there. You know, Chief Lopier went down to Sam's book, talked to the, the manager down there, did what we had to do. Now it's just in a stall, but just wanted, we are working on every grant possible to try to save money.
Well, we've done pretty good in the last few years with almost close to a hundred thousand. So we're doing good.
Perfect. Thank you.
Company Four Firehouse and Space Need Updates.
Obviously, that's gonna still be settled for now, um, until we can get to the town. Uh, we submitted the paperwork to the town for the building committee. And it's just, you know, one of those projects going forward is we'll have to start talking to that in the budget season and try to hopefully push that forward a little bit more uh, with a little sense of urgency, because of the replacement to the apparatus.
Okay. Up, this one's for you, Chief Regina. Update of tablets transition Alpine software for department.
The core product, Red M M X product, is functional. Uh, there's been some upgrades being made. We've got a couple of issues with some of the way the upgrades get pushed out. Um, I've been working, I've been testing the M V P that will be used by the cheese captains and probably redo some reconfiguration on the M V Ps and the apparatus. As of last Thursday, I gave the unit back to our I T department regarding some problems that we're having with it. They're trying to work through something to try to come up with an answer on it. Um, I'm hoping tomorrow I get an answer from Scott on where we are with it. Um, but overall, the core system is working and doing well. The finger recognition, everybody's using the check-in on it, we use it at training, um, you know, so those type of things are all functional. We had a little issue with the upgrade. We're down the truck bay display panels. Um, so we're trying to get through, find out why that happened when they did the upgrade, but there's been a lot of background what's going on that every time we make some changes, they have to push it out and not always test it. So we're trying to, we're gonna try to get a handle on that. I'll be talking to them tomorrow. Um, but overall, it's going well. Just gotta get through that M P K issue that we're having. That's really the last thing.
I'd just like to comment, because I know in our discussions, when we talk offhandedly, that the president, I think, of the company of Red M M X has been
New CEO.
The new CEO has been coming to you for recommendations and
Yeah, we've been, I, we, I say we, but I've been working with him on some things and including I S O. So we're, they're working some of the ideas around I S O. I shared our documentation with them that we, I was able to obtain directly from I S O. Not the rating stuff as much as how I S O works, the matrix a little bit. And they're gonna work on building it into the product. It'll help them in sales, but it'll also help us. We'll have it first. And we'll have a tool that we print out our reports to I S O.
It's all there.
It's all there.
Kudos to you, Chief. Thank you.
I had a good conversation with our I S O rep yesterday regarding some things and you know, pretty keep pushing hard on getting that that, you know, when we're ready to do the review.
So the decision last year to go with the M M X has, was a positive and a good thing.
They were purchased or received capital from a company that supports other software companies. And with that funding, he became the new C E O. And there's all those new financial things, and they're hiring people. We have a dedicated person, one of the few that do. Um, so anytime I have anything, I call Cable. Cable takes care of it.
Awesome.
Thanks. We're getting a level of support that nobody else. But the other town, they do now have a person, but not dedicated like ours. They're sharing.
Awesome. That's great.
Working on.
I'm very happy we would, because we went to Red M M X. We talked to people that want the E S O. They're having very, very difficult time with the transition. Some are taking years, if not more, uh, with the transition. So I'm happy we went this way, and it's been working out great for us. So.
Great.
Excellent.
Sure, come a long way from Rip and Run, Hot Commissioner. Chief, you remember, Chief, Rip and Run. Remember them? Wow, back in the
Um, just a couple of things on Red M M X also. Um, so Martin Wall is, we're working out from the H R side, Zach and Martin have been handling the personnel stuff. Uh, Martin is going out doing some end first training. He's going to each company to make sure they're up to speed. Um, if you have any questions. Cass Machado and Cassidy have been working hard on getting the, you know, finger and thumb setups done, completed, and making sure the training is, you know, all and ready. So when you sign in, you get it done that, that while we're there at the Falls. The, there's, there Yeah, Lieutenant Jur, I think thirty-second. Um, has set up all the cabinets on for all the apparatus. And we're going to hold an engineers meeting to get the engineers to make sure that we're all on the same page. And then all of the inventory for the apparatus will be loaded in. And we'll have an accurate inventory per piece. We can print out one sheet, say, truck one has this in this cabinet, you'll be able to get all of it. More than me now working on it, so it's helping a lot.
Excellent.
They're also working on the work order part of it. So if someone was looking for something, they needed a apparatus repaired, a building repaired. It's gonna send the form to the direct chief that needs to, and we'll know when it's repaired and all that stuff.
Lieutenant Carlo set up truck base stuff, set up the fingerprint recognition devices. We've got a couple of the fingers that these help us accomplish. Making it a lot easier for us to get all this data in. We wouldn't be able to, if we didn't have this all jumping in and all that. Wow.
Great, thank you. And that's more hours. That's probably not on any training sheet for sheet.
No.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, autism fundraising.
Fund, uh, fundraising is still going on constantly. In fact, this Sunday, uh, we got asked to come down to the Thomasin Parade with State Firefighters Convention. The chief of Thomasin, his son is autistic. And actually specially requested our fire doctor to go to the parade. Uh, so our guys will be down there this weekend. Some are gonna be doing a labor ride, some are gonna be doing that. So
Busy weekend.
It's been a busy, been a busy week. We actually, we have a whole crew at the high school field right now for public safety appreciation, or first responder, and I apologize. Uh, all of our companies are there. So, uh, we probably have twenty, twenty-five minutes. Not bad, yeah.
Yeah, your wife said to give you a kiss.
But, uh, yeah, so we're, uh, these, the next couple of months, we have stuff lined up almost, you know, consistently. There's quite a bit.
Thank you. Okay, anything else on old business before I move on? All right. Um, new business. Um, so I'd like to open up a discussion on modifications for the rules and regulations. Last month, we discussed and, and I, I was the bad guy on this. I'll take the heat on this one, but we're gonna make it right this month. We have a deputy chief's position available.
Open.
Open. And so that more people can get the experience in taking the test. We'd like to modify We'd like to modify.
Going through the process.
Right, to go through the process, we'd like to modify what is in the current rules and regulations. Um, so um, it is noted that to change in a new fire department rules and regulations may be made by the board of fire commissioners. Without going to the rules and regulations committee. Um, in that case, modification changes must be posted for thirty days at each firehouse. For members to review. And um, to be brought up at the next board of fire commissioners meeting. Members have the opportunity to provide feedback. Should no feedback be received or further modification changes. Need to be made either in person or in writing. The commission may vote for acceptance. If further changes need to be made, the posting for the changes at the firehouse starts again for another thirty days. So the changes that the commission would like to make. It's in, I believe it's section three under the deputy chief's qualifications. Um, and it's an under eligibility and that just a couple of typos here. Uh, to be a candidate for the position of deputy fire chief, not. Not chief officer, specific deputy fire chief. A member must satisfy the following criteria. Be a mem-, this is how it's stated now. Be a member in good standing, have ten years of service, be certified fire officer one. And serve one full term as company captain. What we would like the changes to be. Are must be fire officer one certified or must obtain certification within a reasonable timeframe. And must have served as a company. Excuse me, a company line captain. And the other change is the fire commission reserves the right to pick from the top three candidates. So those are the changes that we would like to make, and I would open it up for discussion with the other two commissioners.
I, I agree with the changes. I think all we're trying to do is be more inclusive rather than exclusive. We're trying to. Um, when we uh adopted these rules and regs originally, um. We didn't think of the situation that we're in now. We're in a situation where we don't have that many candidates, so we'd like to be. Uh, have it open for more candidates so that we can. Um. And improve the process.
Commissioner. My, my um comment in regarding the uh changes, the proposed changes. Um, I'm in full agreement with the way this policy change is written. And one of the discussions that I've had with several members of the department is. I served on the rules and regulations committee last year. One of the things that I find when you adopt rules and regulations, you possibly cannot cover every aspect of. Having something written in black and white because you never know when an immediate change needs to be made. The fact that the board of fire commissioners has that capability to, to do certain changes. Without the approval of rules and regulations, I think is a plus. For the, for the fire department. In, in this particular case, we all felt that we needed to make this more inclusive. And include more people that want to advance into a, a chief's officer's position. And having it written the way it was, um. I really, I really didn't like the language to begin with, and I'm glad that we were all in agreement to change it. So that we have more inclusivity for uh the, the members of the department.
And I would like to point out that. We have no individual in mind when we consider making these changes.
Absolutely not, absolutely not. The, uh, the one thing that concerned me with having them serve as one full term. Um, with the new rules and regulations bringing it up to four years. Um, we were very limited in our pool because we have captains that have full terms at three years. But now a full term is four years. So, you know, it eliminated them and it also eliminated members and captains. That stepped up to the plate when other captains were either promoted or left or retired. And they had two and a half, almost three years, but it was still made them ineligible. So. This just makes it all inclusive and.
This is a bigger pool.
Yep, and I would like uh somebody to make a motion with the corrected. With the corrected um position of deputy fire chief and not chief uh chief officer.
Should it be deputy and assistant? Assistant and deputy?
No, because I think the assistance is another separate, it's separate. Because the, the debt, the assistant chief, you must be deputy before your assistant. So that's a different, that's different. So would anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we adopt the proposed changes as written.
No.
Uh, with.
With the, uh, with the deputy chief's position.
Okay, with the corrected, with the corrected language.
Yep.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Um, so this will be posted for thirty days in the firehouse, the um. The old and the new language. Um, I just looked on my calendar, we meet in twenty-eight days, so we will most likely have to have a special meeting. To adopt this following our next October commissioners meeting, so we can plan for like the fifteenth or something in October. So that'll be coming down the road. We'll make a special meeting just to uh adopt these new rules and regulations because it's only twenty-eight days. From tomorrow for the posting till our next commissioners meeting, so.
Agreed.
Just so you know, that's coming down the road. Okay, thank you. We will get that out to the firehouses tomorrow. Thank you.
What's this gonna do for the, the opening right now?
It will.
We're gonna have to wait another thirty days.
We're gonna, it's gonna delay.
It's, it's gonna delay the process by, it's, it's gonna do. It's. So at our October meeting, the special meeting when we adopt this. The next day we'll be able to post the new position, which will be posted for two weeks. And then we. I, I believe. And then I believe we should give the firefighters sixty to ninety days to study for the test.
Just fill in the, the opening.
So we're probably looking at the first of the year instead of the end of November.
Puts a lot of burden on the rest.
It does put burden and uh we have discussed that with them and they're all ready to step up and uh. Shoulder the load.
What you've surprised me.
Because that's what we do around, that's what we do around here, right, chief?
I just wanna make a comment in the load, um. Lieutenant Muir and Lieutenant uh Castro have done a fantastic job filling in for the vacant deputy spot. And have done a phenomenal job of trying to keep up with stuff. So um, a lot of stuff comes in, I give it to them, they take care of it. And um, you know, they're, they're getting quotes, they're doing stuff like that, so I give kudos to them. They were part of that division and they've really stepped up, did a fantastic job. And so I really wanna say, you know. To you guys, they're doing awesome. So.
Yeah, I was.
So that the, the load isn't that much on the other.
And that's a big position, buildings and apparatus is a huge position. Not that any of yours are. I know training is, I know Tommy yours is also. But you're, there's stuff always breaking, there's trucks always breaking, there's something always going wrong in the firehouse, so.
We're on top of it, it's really, it's a great job.
That's awesome. Thank you. Um. Discussion on future planning of new fire apparatus due to long lead times. So. What we're finding out is, and it, and it's no big secret, like truck two, I think we're at. Twenty-four to thirty months with, when we ordered truck two. We ordered engine two, we started here in oh, about thirty-six months. Now we're here in forty to forty-five months for our. Future. Apparatus purchases.
So just, just you were, I had Lieutenant Muir read something like John, our, our fire rep for fire medic, uh, for the apparatus. Currently, engine two is slated for twenty twenty-five for delivery, uh, if everything goes right. Uh, what month, I'm not a hundred percent sure. It all depends on how it gets in the line. Uh, but as of right now, um, aerial deliveries. Are currently showing forty-two to forty-five months. And an engine um is. Uh, thirty-seven to forty months. Same with the rescue. Um, the other part that kinda concerns me and I think really needs to be discussed and we really need to get into discussing this. Um, right now, there's no price increases that we signed the paperwork today. But they're talking about now putting an actual percent increase per year in the contracts. Because what's happening is these dealers are finding out that you sign a contract today and in four years from now. There's a ten or fifteen percent increase that they're looking to get over years and they're losing out on that, that backside. So now, thank, thank God, we took the uh engine two one and that's a locked price. But now they're talking about putting increases in the contracts. So that's something to think about also. So right now. Let's say we were to replace truck one, which is doing twenty twenty-six. You know, we would have to start doing that next year to get it in on time. So that's the difficult part that we have to.
Right.
Work with the town and the financial side and see how we can get that done. Um, because tech, truck one and tech two are both through the same exact year, twenty twenty-six. They made their twenty-year replacement plan. They were bought on the same exact year.
And, and I know for a fact it's not just Pierce. It's, it's every man, like New Haven just ordered, my son was telling me, they just ordered a new uh seagrave.
I heard tillers right now, five years.
Five years.
Atiller truck, no matter where you go, five years. Doesn't matter what manufacturer you go to.
That's crazy.
New Haven and Hartford, we're looking at tiller trucks, five-year build time. Even, even a Tahoe right now, you were to go get a new Tahoe, they're talking possibly a year for, for delivery.
Crazy.
That's nuts.
Well, we just have to keep it in the back of our mind for budgeting and um.
Right.
You know, hopefully our partners at the town council will work with us and. Um. You know, help us get through it, so. All right, chief, thank you.
I just didn't want there to be surprises, that's why I brought it up.
No, no, I don't want, I really don't like surprises, so, thank you. Um, Chief Stegmyer's not here. If anyone would like to discuss the future staffing of the fire department. Chief, you wanna? Speak on that a little bit, how we going, moving forward? What do you see staffing wise in the near future or?
Uh, right now, we're at ninety-eight members. Um, we have four in a pipeline, so we're gonna be at over a hundred members probably, I would say, probably within the next two, three months. Uh, we also have fifteen and twenty cadets that are still there, so we're at like a hundred and twenty-five members. Um, the one thing I do see going forward, I'm gonna be honest with you, is I, I think with the amount of work that's involved in. In the chief's position, I, I honestly think that it's, we're gonna have to start looking at possibly going to a day chief down the road. Um, it's something that I think is something we need to discuss as a group. And really put our heads together on that. It's. With the amount of time, it's, it's a full-time job. Um, there's no saying what's about, about it. With the amount of meetings, the uh, the paperwork, everything that's involved, it, it's, it's a lot. And I try to juggle two jobs, it's, it's not easy. But we do it, we get through it, but I really think that's something that has to be looked at going forward.
Okay. But firefighter-wise, officer positions-wise, so far, we're pretty good shape?
We're in fantastic shape.
Nothing's vacant at this point that.
Everything's filled as of right now, um, but nothing, no, nothing.
Good, awesome. That's awesome. Okay, thank you, chief. All right, um, public participation for the second and last time for the evening. Anyone would like to. Speak, public participation, Johnny, I'll get you second, Chief Lopier.
I'd like to talk about the chief. But the doctor that you're trying to make. I, I'm a rules and rights guy. I've been a big opponent on, because our chiefs are there for a very long time, the captain stays stagnant in same division, same first lieutenant. Prior to this last rules and rights, I believe if you were a first lieutenant for two terms, you were eligible, but I've been talking to people that were eligible last time. But they're not this time because they've never made actual cap. And I don't know why that didn't get adopted where it was the time before. The second thing is I think you needed fire officer one to be a chief for probably fifteen or twenty years. I think you need fire officer one to be a captain these days. So why are you making it, you don't need it to be a chief now, but you can get it?
Well, a- according to our thing, you do need to have fire officer one.
Right, but you don't have to have it, you can get it in a reasonable amount of time. If you need to, obviously one to be a captain, why wouldn't you need it to be a chief?
So just so you know, John, we have appointed captains that have not had fire officer one. And they have been given. Yes, and they have been given time to go get. Fire officer one certification. Same with chiefs, there, there has been times when a, a chief was appointed deputy chief that did not have fire officer one. Um, not, well, maybe not that long ago, but.
You need to also be a chief. Why you don't have it? If you don't have it by now, you've never thought about being a chief.
You, you're, well. So they, they do need to get it.
But in the past, you, if you were eligible to be a lieutenant for terms. You're eligible because like I said, you get a good captain in a firehouse, they can be there for ten years and this.
Right.
Never move up.
Right.
And that was in there, I believe, the last time, if you were to turn to, to a lieutenant or possibly lieutenant.
And I, and I do, and I do believe that was under a different chairman of the fire commission.
Say you wanna open up to more people, so why didn't you let the lieutenant that had two terms eligible? If they're a good officer, they're gonna do good on the test. If they're not, they're gonna do loudly on the test. You're still opening up to more people than just saying if you were a captain. Because you can get a captain tomorrow. You now be eligible.
That's true.
You know, see if I can do it open writing and get it on page that we have for next month.
Thank you, John. Chief.
I didn't know if this was best to bring up now or when we were talking about the grants, but just. So that everybody's awareness, again, like the chief said, no surprises. The state's trying to right now pass legislation. That we have to be committed to by what, the middle of November, I think?
Well, so they're still trying to pass the law and then we're gonna have ninety days to be able to be in compliance with it. And the government, the ninety-day compliance is that we're gonna have to clean caps. Which means that anybody that goes into a fire, all your gear, all the equipment, everything is gonna have to be transported in a different area back to the firehouse. Um, it's a huge, huge thing. I, I don't know how departments are gonna do it, to be honest with you. Uh, there's space needs that are gonna be needed. Uh, just the cleaning of the, the, I mean, we, we mandate that every one of our guys that goes to a working fire, their gear has to be washed within fifteen days. But. They, they're saying this is mandatory now. Um, these are, this is gonna be a state mandate that is gonna come out unfunded, unfunded.
So it's still another unfunded.
The other, the other part of it is that they want gear not stored in apparatus base. Well, that would mean we would need a whole separate room just for apparatus, for the gear. Uh, there's just, there's a ton of stuff that's in this bill that just does not make sense. Now, I know that the, it, all the chiefs are, you know, fighting it with the state, not fighting it, but having discussed a lot of situations, there's a lot of questions on it. You know. Lot of departments can't even afford one set of gear. Now try to get two sets of gear. Uh, a set of gears anywhere from four to five thousand dollars a piece. Per month.
Yeah.
You know, you, we have a hundred guys here, it's five hundred thousand dollars, so you'd have to come up with tomorrow to get that mandate stated.
Are, are they going in the special session to vote on this or?
I don't know when, but we've gotten paperwork already. I've already talked to, you know, obviously the chiefs have talked a little bit about it. I talked to, and one of the things that we're concerned that. If we've gotta wash our gear as many times as they're requesting. Now that ten-year gear that we're running right now, is that gonna break down faster? Are we gonna, like?
Right, you're gonna get five years.
Wash it mandatory twice a year, whether we have a fire or not. And then after every fire, you gotta wash it. And you have to have, you know, be like gross decon. At a fire, and then like the chief said, transport it out of the fire truck. So nothing can be in cars or fire trucks. And I mean, I got, uh, I was looking for pricing for our dress uniforms for dry cleaning. Because our current vendor was. Because our current vendor was like the astronomical price. And. Uh Sunshine Laundry gave me a quote, he has machines that could do, our whole department did like two loads of wash. But he's got five hundred pound machine is just like we have downstairs, which is a fifty pound machine.
Right.
So and fifteen dollars for a coat, fifteen dollars for a pair of pants. So that could be just, if we had to think of the dollar figure, if we had a large fire. And all of our companies responded and we had to wash. Forty or fifty sets of gear at thirty dollars a set.
Right.
Plus now there's that dry time and, and because he can't dry it. So that's why we've gotta start looking at. But if we do a mass gear buy, now you, everything in ten years. That whole set run a year is out. The chief Regina had set up, you know, when we started our year. They're buying currently twenty sets of gear a year. At the tune of about a hundred thousand dollars.
But not only is that a concern, this new state mandate. Recently on the news and everybody's been seeing it in the papers and everywhere is this PFAS stuff. Well, now it's really starting to come to to light. That all of the gear that firefighters wear has a slight amount of PFAS, it's just causing cancer. So. Not only is the mandate coming, but now this PFAS thing is coming out, and now they're saying that that. Certain states are mandating that no gear has any PFAS in it. Well, that could, that could eliminate every set of gear in every department, because every department has some type of PFAS. In their layer of protection. It may be miniscule, but it's enough that it's, people are actually bringing this to court for cancer. So that just came out today on NBC thirty. Had a bunch of departments are coming out, now there are certain states right now that have made it mandatory. That they don't allow any PFAS in their gear.
And one of the things with this new bill is if you don't comply. They're not gonna pay the cancer piece that just passed. So now everybody's, if we don't comply as a department. None of our members are eligible to get a ben- a cancer benefit should they get cancer.
Right.
So there's a big, big thing that we all need to look at, you know, not only in our department, but going into the. Into the town that, you know, there's, there are reasons our budgets are where they are. And it's being driven by outside forces.
Well, as you know, with the state mandate for the PFAS home that we just recently fought to get the uh funding for. Uh that was another state mandate that, obviously they made it mandatory, but there was no funding available for us. We fought as a department, you guys went in front of the legislator and fought to get that grant program. That still isn't implemented yet.
Right.
I mean, here it is already in November, now we're working on it, the funding is there, but it's just not implemented yet.
You're right.
And that's for us to be able to clean all of our apparatus of the PFAS that we have in our trucks. But in the meantime, something was to happen, the town was lobbying for it. So that's the hard part, now we have caps that are secure on there, so that no one should be able to get into it, but still.
Accidents happen. If you have a tank failure or even an accident, now you have that liability.
Yeah, right.
So there's a lot of stuff going on, there's a lot of. Moving parts that you wanna say in the state right now. So we're just, we're gonna work through it as best we can.
Okay, thank you. Well, not like in the olden days where they threw us in a building and said, go put it out, no Scottbacks, no nothing, remember Commissioner? Yeah, BB over in Bloomfield. Um anybody, Chief Regina?
A month or so ago, um Chief Trauma received a letter from the uh Ewagimo. Memorial people regarding the flag changing and such, and they had also offered to invite us to. Um participate in a walk. Um and Captain Dirty, our. Um cadet captain saw the letter. Said gee, that'd be great to do, we were in one of our command staff meetings. Um and Captain Anderson said gee, he'd do it, I said I'd do it, and um. Maya Plongo said she would do it, so last Sunday, the four of us participated in a walk from the state legislative building. Or it was actually the armory from the memorial there. Um through up to uh Farmington Avenue, all the way to the West Hartford Center, from West Hartford Center. To South Main Street, the Fenn Road, where we were greeted by Chief Trauma, Engine Three, the EMS captain. Um and proceeded into the Ewagimo Memorial for service and other chiefs and other members that. It was an honor to participate in it, and I will um said, I jokingly said that Captain Dirty threw the gauntlet out. And said he wants to do the twenty two mile walk next year, and uh the four of us agreed we were gonna start working out. To be ready for that twenty two march into the World Trade Center next year, and I'm asking anyone else in the department. That's interested in participating, we'll do the eight mile, eight and a half mile actually. Uh again, next year, and then the next day, we're gonna jump in and do the twenty two down to New York.
So just so everybody knows, this walk was for.
Shepherd's Men.
Shepherd's Men, it's spelled Shepperman Walk, and it's to uh recognize that there's twenty two suicides, veteran suicides per day. And it was to raise funds to help uh veterans with uh PTSD and suicide prevention.
And so they now included uh first responders in that message, and uh one of the reasons why. And I had, I'd say we were in and just thought every channel was covering it, because um. Uh Larson, Martin Larson. Um and the mayor, uh we're apart, we're there for the cameras, there's six different channels that were there. And somehow he ended up small, so including the online stuff, so it was pretty funny, but um you actually. Each other, the part of your walk, they're not just walking, you're um doing a fireman's carry on your shoulder. So, pretty funny to watch, but the the folks from Georgia that came up from Shepherd Men's um. They're pretty buff and uh, you know, had no problem doing it, but so the rash was will continue to work on it. We'll we'll get there.
Kudos to you, Chief, thank you.
I do wanna say thank you to the, you know, the four of them that participated, it was fantastic, it was it was very hard to escort them into the Ewagimo Memorial. And I do thank you to Blue Magic.
Thank you, Chief.
And I think Dirty too.
I think all of them. That's a long walk.
It's just one more thing that we do, Chief, right?
Absolutely.
Any other public participation? Counselor Manke, anything, things all good on the town side? Great. Anybody?
Everything's good.
Counselor Page.
Counselor Page, how are you, sir?
I'm good, gentlemen, thanks for having me tonight, everything's good.
We can just about hear you.
Yeah, breaking up.
Yeah, audio's breaking up.
Okay, check one, two, I don't know if you can hear that any better.
There you go.
Okay, you know, it's all good, thanks for having me tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Page, thank you very much. With any, everything's on the uh town side?
It's all good, all good, yep.
Thank you, sir, okay. Last call for public participation. Commissioners' remarks, I'll start with Commissioner Stoddard.
Um I I have to start by saying that I'm always. Um overwhelmed by how much is going on in the department all the time, there's. There's stuff going on every day and. Most of the time, two things a day. Um I do wanna point out that we just had. Uh our officers trained in sexual harassment prevention. And I understand from our training officer that it went very well, so.
Yeah, Kerma uh presented, had two people here to do the training. All of our officers, we had a couple that weren't able to attend, uh went through the training, we have three more sessions coming and um. The uh first, the instructor uh was engaging, brought us some topics and uh people had questions and. I I think it went really well.
Good, I think that's important, and I I know we do online sexual harassment training.
He took the class uh that we, I signed him up for, he took it. And was impressed with our class, he too realized that you couldn't cheat and go to the end. And you realize when you walk away from the keyboard, it stops, so um. It was pretty interesting that he actually brought that up.
Yep. Um that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, Commissioner Frank.
There's an awful lot going on, as we, as we have said, um I am. Always impressed at as to uh what this department does on a daily basis. Um I I have the availability to be around during the day, um generally in the evenings. Um and I spend an awful lot of time listening to what goes on on the radio. And uh it just totally blows my mind as to what we are able to accomplish on a daily basis here. Uh kudos to um both um Lieutenant Jean Santi and. Cassanie McNamara for their recent promotions. Um here again, these are people that have decided to step up and fill the void. Where, you know, where we have some issues, and I'm glad that uh they're willing to do this. So my my hats off to them and uh the chiefs, as always, the command staff has done an outstanding job. And um, you know, I thank you for everything that you guys do on a daily basis.
Thank you, Commissioner. So unlike the two of them, I'm still on the line, and is it me or are we going out a lot more?
Seems like uh on a daily basis, we're going on five, six runs a day now.
Yeah.
It's it's busy.
Yeah, it's busy, oh yesterday I think we did seven runs.
We did, yeah.
And uh it's, it's gotten very, very busy.
Our call volume is going up through the roof right now.
Yeah, and it seems like we're getting called on a lot of stuff that we've. Interesting calls, right, we're we're going on some interesting stuff that we once never went on and uh. But our guys are there to take care of it and thank God for every single one of them, and I thank them from the bottom of my heart, like I do at every meeting. And just remember that this is a family, and you know, we all have to stick together. And uh to get the job done for the good of the people of the town of New England, so. Thank you, thank you very much, and um that's all, I'll end that, my remarks, and uh ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.